And thank you all for being here. It's nice to see all your faces shiny and bright. And Megan, could you please call the roll?
Regent Bogust?
Here.
Regent Weatherly. Regent Weatherly. Regent Adams?
President.
Regent Adongo?
Here.
Regent Fritz?
Here.
Regent Goedam? Regent Goedam?
Did you not hear me? Can you not hear me?
You're very faint, but we can slightly hear you.
All right, I will, I'm.
That's better. That sounds good.
All right, I'll leave it. Thank you.
Yep. Regent Cruiser?
President.
Regent Many Deeds?
Here.
Regent Nixon?
Here.
Regent Palzewitz?
Here.
Regent Prince?
President.
Regent Rye?
Here.
Regent Rogers?
Here.
Regent Salzwedel?
Here.
Regent Ter Williger?
Here.
Regent Traynor? Regent Underlee?
Here.
Regent Walsh?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you, Megan. As we consider items on today's agenda, are there board members who wish to declare any conflicts of interest regarding today's open session agenda? Right now, let's proceed. The record of the October 9th, 2025 meeting of the UW System Board of Regents has been provided. Are there any corrections? Okay. Hearing none, the minutes are approved as distributed. Before we get started, I would like to thank everyone for finding time in your schedules for this special board meeting and for doing all the necessary prep work to be fully prepared to address the important topics we have before us today. And I really sincerely mean this. There are so many thank yous to go around, but I appreciate all the regions' time and effort in really being up to speed. I mean, this is extremely important to all of the campuses, to the system, and the future of our campuses. So I appreciate all of you, and I also really want to take this opportunity to express my deep appreciation for the support and feedback from all of the universities, all the colleagues, all 13 of our universities, members of shared governance, UW administration, and every student, staff, and faculty member who engaged throughout this process. I mean, I know that there's been thousands of hours put into this. I know Johannes's team has worked diligently and spent hundreds of hours working on this. And it was, it's a heavy lift, and I want to really express, I think, all of us really, really deeply appreciate the time and effort and thoughtfulness that has gone into this. This process beginning immediately after the 2025 budget bill was signed, and that's what we're considering today. I'd like to emphasize that consulting with shared governance on these issues has been and will continue to be a critical part of the process. We acknowledge that these circumstances are not often ideal and can be very difficult. I think we all understand that. This is a huge, heavy lift. But the process does not end today with the vote today. There will be policies required at both the system and university level arising from these discussions, and there will almost certainly be opportunities for further engagement. I think that we all know that when things are moving so fast, there'll be tweaks that need to be made, and the end goal is to make sure that these policies are really what is best, and we are mostly concerned about the campuses, the students, the faculty, staff, and everyone that's involved in the universities and the campuses. So today, as required by the Wisconsin State Legislature's approval of 2025 Wisconsin Act 15, we will be taking up two very significant topics: the UW's teaching workload policy and the UW's core general education requirements. First on the agenda is Regent Policy Document 2025: Teaching Workload Policy. The faculty workload policy today is intended to fulfill the requirements of the state budget, meet student needs, and respect faculty responsibilities. We believe it does just that. Vice President Fritz, Vice President Patton, and Stephen Schmidt, Senior Director of Academic Partnerships and Planning, are joining us here today. They all worked extremely hard the past few months with shared governance, university leadership, and the legislature to help bring about this proposal. They're going to briefly share the proposal and address your questions. My, um, Johannes and Stephen.
Who's to start with first?
Oh, sorry. I ignored you. I'm sorry, Vice President Patton. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much, President Bogust. You know, as you mentioned, the revisions to Policy Document 20-25 that you have before you today is definitely a product of that collaborative process that we began back in July, immediately upon the governor signing the budget into law. At President Rothman's direction, we created a work group consisting of provosts, faculty, academic staff, university attorneys, UW administration, really a whole host of folks across the universities of Wisconsin to begin crafting the proposed changes necessary to implement the teaching workload requirements under Act 15. The work group met on a weekly basis, really sometimes almost four to five times per week over the last five months. I particularly want to call out the work of our faculty and academic staff members who worked tirelessly to not only lend their voices and expertise to the work group, but also they met with the respective constituencies on a regular basis to share information and gather feedback. Additionally, the work group leadership met collectively with faculty and academic staff, shared governance representatives, university chancellors, provosts, and other university community leaders to gather input. We met individually with universities to discuss the impact of Act 15's workload provisions and analyzed approaches to teaching workload in the higher education sector across the nation. Finally, the proposed revised policy was available for an open comment period in order to solicit feedback from any member of the university community who wished to provide feedback. We believe the policy revisions before you provide the best approach, given the input received from all internal and external stakeholders. It provides the necessary tools for our universities, faculty, and instructional academic staff to meet their teaching workload commitments under Act 15, while at the same time carrying out their important mission of teaching, research, and service to their students and our state. The work group's efforts conform to the three areas outlined in Act 15 by delivering a revised policy for consideration that defines clear guidelines to aid implementation, establishes appropriate exceptions that address the operational complexity of 13 diverse educational enterprises, and preserves and protects the vital research being performed by our amazing faculty and staff across all 13 universities. Act 15 requires the board to submit its revised teaching workload policy to the Joint Committee on Employment Relations by December 1st of this year. The committee has until January 31st to review and approve the policy. We appreciate the board's consideration of the recommended policy revisions to Regent Policy Document 20-25. Senior Vice President Fritz, Project Lead Schmidt, and I welcome your questions.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 4?
So moved, Weatherly.
Second, Fritz.
Hey. Is there a discussion? Yes. Regent Nixon?
I just wanted to clear that because we didn't ask any questions when Vice President Patton gave us the, it's not that we didn't ask questions. I am sure there are certain members of the staff that don't even want to look at me, much less hear my voice. And I presume it's the same for the other regions as well. There was a lot of conversation, discussion, work done on this, and I'm going to do my lawyer thing because I think this guides a lot of what we do. This is a law in the state of Wisconsin. As a lawyer, I've got this funny thing about following the law. Some of you have heard me talk about that. This was passed by a Republican legislature, signed by a Democratic governor. And we are a state institution, and we are bound to follow the law. And so we will do that. Are the deadlines short? Yes, but they put them in there like that. And I follow many things under law that I don't necessarily agree with and don't necessarily like. And the criticism that this is political is really useless because we're in a governmental setting. Everything is political. Okay? We must send this back to Joker. Well, the Joint Committee on, I just enjoy saying that. And, and they must look at it and approve it. And keep in mind, these are also the people that approve our budgets. All right? So there's a very large political milieu here and that the recommendation tries to navigate. And I think it has navigated it well. Is it a compromise? Oh, heavens, yes. Is it done quickly? We didn't have much of a choice. But within the constraints of what we have to do legally, and I also commend my other regions because I know there are a lot of questions and people asking. So just because there weren't questions immediately doesn't mean there weren't questions. You will notice Vice President Fritz's head went down when he hears me talk because he probably gets a headache. So I just wanted to make those comments before we voted.
Thank you, Regent Nixon. Are there any other questions or concerns, comments from any other regions before we vote? Okay. I don't see any. Do you see any? Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed, say no. And I don't hear any, so motion passes. Thank you, regions. Moving on, next up, we'll consider a proposed new Regent Policy Document entitled Core General Education Requirements. The proposed Core General Education Requirement Policy is designed to provide a framework wherein general education credits earned by students at one of our 13 universities of Wisconsin will transfer and apply toward graduation requirements at another University of Wisconsin university. Subject to the Board of Regents, our universities will continue to consult with faculty, staff for designing and setting degree requirements as prescribed by state law. The role of shared governance in this process is absolutely essential, and the curriculum and course design will continue to be in control of the faculty. Vice President Fritz, Vice President Patton, and UW Oshkosh Provost Ed Martini worked with shared governance, university legislature, or sorry, university leadership and the legislature to help us arrive at today's proposal. And they have worked, just to emphasize that, many, many, many hours, and they can share more information and answer questions for us. Do you want to provide anything?
Thank you. Thank you, President Bogust. I would just thank you for the opportunity, and also thank you for your words of appreciation for the hard work of the teams across our universities. My few introductory comments about this proposed RPD on the Core General Education Transfer Requirements are as follows. Firstly, as you have noticed on the policy itself, firstly, this policy describes how Core General Education Requirement Credit Hours transfer and apply to degree requirements for students who transfer between UW universities. Secondly, the Core General Education Requirements are defined in this policy as comprising undergraduate courses focused on foundational knowledge and skills, which is what Gen Ed is all about, in six broad categories totaling a minimum of 10 courses and 30 to 36 credit hours. And thirdly, as you could see in the policy, five rules are identified and described in the policy that will govern the transfer and applicability of Core General Education Requirements. And we will also, or are working on, should this be approved, on interim policy, a sys policy that actually work on the operationalization of the Regent Policy. Regent President, regarding the process, I also would like to make a few comments. First of all, when we saw the act in early July of this year, we formed a core group over the summer that comprised of faculty and administrators to help us to inform the process that we will follow to get to today. Actually, this group actually came out of a regional transfer policy group that we already had established. We just added a few people to really inform us on the process. Secondly, a few weeks later, we established two work groups. One focused on operations, and the other focused more on academic matters that helped shape this policy. For example, on what transfer credits, auditing of degree transfers, placement testing, these are all the details that we already had to start work on. Important, these work groups were staffed with representatives from all 13 UWs and included experts in the field, academic and curriculum experts, transfer advising and degree audit specialists, as well as registrars and IT experts. Currently, we have these two groups working, and it's about 30 to 35 people from our campuses or universities on these two groups as they move forward with their work. My third comment is we are not isolated. We are not the only system actually that do look at gen ed. We also did the national landscape. This is not unique. Many university systems do have a Core Gen Ed requirement for their universities. We also had numerous discussions and feedback that we saw throughout the process with key stakeholders. I just want to mention a few. Over the summer, we already, actually, our very first meeting on laying out a framework was with our shared governance leads over the summer in August. We also had then extensive discussions we needed with some of the campus Gen Ed committees. We also extended an invitation to all shared governance leads to say, if you need more information, if you really want to meet with us, we are actually willing to drive out to the campuses in person and have meetings. A number of campuses did follow up, and those meetings did happen. We also had meetings with the chancellor as a group, but also follow-up meetings on an individual basis with most of the chancellor. We also met with the provost numerous times individually, and also on their teams that assist them on gen education on their campuses. And then we also briefed the regions as we moved forward. This policy, as the previous speaker mentioned, was also distributed for two weeks to solicit feedback from a broad range of constituencies. Changes has been made, or have been made, based on the feedback that we have received from our stakeholder groups. The resulting policy, under consideration, meets the requirements of Act 15 in a manner that is student-friendly, maintains, as you have alluded to, President Bogust, control of the general education course composition and learning outcomes at the university level, and promotes the ease of credit transfer among universities of Wisconsin. As you mentioned, the hours, I just also want to extend a word of thanks to my team and to the campus teams, the university teams that work with us. We just calculated roughly, underestimation, more than 500 meetings we had on this very topic. And I did give my colleague Nellu Genshu a call earlier, and I said, if he doesn't mind, I also just want to express my appreciation because he was involved in every single of the Act 15 changes. I don't know where he did find time to teach, but he was there, and he helped us through the process. So Provost Martini, Vice President Patton, Dr. Stephen Schmidt, and I are here to take any questions. Thank you, President Bogust.
Thank you so much. Before we go any further, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 5?
So moved.
So moved. Well, seconded, Weatherly.
Okay. Discussion. I'm just going to say one thing, and I see a bunch of hands up, that this is quite the heavy lift. I mean, 500 meetings, I don't know where I'd be right now if I had to have 500 meetings on this. But very appreciative, and I'm happy you called out Nellu. He's worked so hard. Everyone has worked so hard. And change is never easy, and when you have to do it, what first changed for 40 years in general ed curriculum, and this is the law, and I think that the regions feel a very heavy duty to make sure that this is implemented well and we carry out the spirit of the law. But that doesn't mean that, just like anything, there are going to be tweaks as we go along, and we want to make sure that system and shared governance are heard. And, you know, I'm sure there'll be little tweaks in here and there, but we will ensure that the spirit of the law, to make it easier, the main goal is about the students and the faculty, staff, and everyone else on campus, but the students are really the topic of concern. So thank you again to everyone, and now I will hear from some regions. I don't know who was first, but regions also is Salzwedel, and then Regent Adongo.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I guess I'd like to start and acknowledge, again, the work of everyone from our system staff and the chancellors and the campus teams. The speed and the volume and the complexity of what we've just gone through is really extraordinary, and I speak on behalf of all the regions to say how grateful we are for all the climate efforts and the 500 meetings, plus, plus, plus. At the same time, I just want to, I guess publicly say that our role as the board doesn't end with the vote today. In fact, in a lot of ways, it's the beginning. And the implementation of Act 15 is going to have tremendous impacts on many, many different partners and stakeholders across our system, across our campuses, and will have real academic and operational impacts. And as stewards of the system, it is our responsibility to monitor how these changes play out as Regent President Bogust just said, and to make sure that the campuses have the support that they need and ensure that the new policies function as intended and identify areas that might be required under the law. I had a couple of long conversations recently with Jay, with some of our Regent leadership, asking for a follow-on resolution to allow us to have some accountability in writing on quarterly and over the next year, at the end of the year, providing a report. And I was, I guess, convinced that it's probably not a good thing to have that, but that verbal commitments have been made that we will get those types of updates on what's, on how campuses are reacting, how different stakeholders are reacting, and that that accountability will be met and that a resolution is not needed at this point. And I'll buy that. But I also just want to make it clear from this region's standpoint that it is our accountability to hold system accountable and to make sure that we're upholding to the law. Similar, there were some commitments made regarding culture at the board retreat recently. None of those were put in writing, but again, those types of commitments, I think as regions, we hold the accountability to hold system accountable for that as well. So that being said, you know, there was some comment about how if we do a follow-on endorsement of some kind, it shows a lack of trust somehow in system or in campuses or whatever, and I don't, I really don't believe that. But I do understand that there is a feeling on that. I would say just the opposite, that the regions are incredibly grateful for all the hard work that's been done. But we have to uphold our end of governance, and part of that is holding people accountable. And so I view this as a central part of our Regent role. And so even though we don't have a follow-on endorsement, I just want to make sure that publicly, that it is the expectation that quarterly, yearly, we get a report, and that the things that were talked about in Green Lake, that those are needed as well. So thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate allowing me a little bit of time.
Thank you, Regent Salzwedel. Regent Adongo?
Thank you, President Bogust. So I also wanted to express my sincere gratitude and also have a question. So this might be a bit of a monologue, but thank you for giving me the time. So since getting my briefing, I took it upon myself to conduct a bit of a study on my own. I'll grant that it's a biased sample, reached out to as many students. Most of them were from my campus with, you know, a generic standard statement outlining what the proposed change looks like. So, you know, we transitioned to this standard of 36 as a cap with the various groupings, categories, or buckets, whatever terming you want to use for that, and have the transferability, more importantly, across all of our institutions, or whether we, as students, believed that each institution having a unique approach to general education was the preferred, and deciding on a case-by-case basis what credits to accept when they transfer. I spoke to at least 20 to 25 students, and every single instance was a positive yes. This sounds like a wonderful idea. And I had a student who transferred from Green Bay to Oshkosh who actually spoke to me about, oh, this would have saved me money and time because I took a class in Green Bay that didn't transfer over as intended. So I had to sit through the same course because it was titled differently. And they made the point that in today's economy, it's not just a couple hundred bucks. That was a significant amount of money and time, and it's impacted my matriculation. So that was part of the story that was shared, all of this being anecdotal. That said, I still want to just walk through this from a novice student perspective. And Vice President Fritz, you can sort of correct me and reaffirm my understanding of this as I go through it. So also partly just so it's on the public record. So to the best of my understanding, this proposal simply provides an upper limit or a ceiling of 36 credits. Then we have categories, buckets, groupings that the Gen Ed curriculum must satisfy, right? That's... And then the policy does not prescribe or dictate what courses are included or excluded. That right still remains with the various campuses. So for example, if an institution believes that experiential learning or sustainability or some other sort of pedagogy is important or a unique or core part of their general education experience, they can still embed that across as many categories or buckets as they would like, preserving their unique experiences. Is that also a fair statement?
That is correct, Regent Adongo.
Okay. And finally, the groupings serve to standardize the transfer experience across our 13 institutions. So if I check the bucket for quantitative reasoning in Oshkosh, and then I say, oh, La Crosse actually has a better fit for what I want to major in, whatever discipline I want to pursue, when I transfer to La Crosse, quantitative reasoning is a one-to-one shift.
Correct, Regent Adongo.
Excellent. Thank you for walking me through that. Have I missed anything else, or is there anything additional that you may need to clarify for me?
I think at this point you have a very good understanding of the policy, Regent Adongo, but as you know, you have my cell phone number or Teams. You can always follow up one call. That's all. And I'm willing to, or one text, that's the best. I don't want to offend other lawyers here, but you're always willing, welcome to reach out to me. And I do appreciate the level of your questions, even in the briefings, that tells me you did your homework to get a very clear understanding of the intention of this policy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And of course, it's not perfect, but I think it's a good starting point. So thank you for all the work and thanks for the effort.
And thank you very much, Regent Adongo. That's pretty impressive that you went and took it upon yourself to do your own research study and confirm what we were hoping. So thank you so much for all your work and effort. I appreciate it. And Regent Many Deeds?
Thank you, Regent President Bogust. So let me, before I start, say that Regent Nixon, Regent Salzwedel, and of course Desmond Adongo are right and presented arguments and statements that a lot of us feel and have shared. One comment on Regent Adongo, you should, you should apply to law school. Our profession needs you. Okay. So Regent Nixon was right. What we're dealing with is the law. We don't have the ability to change the law. It was shoved upon us and all the system and all of the campuses very quickly, and we had to do the best we could, echoing the appreciation for all who were on that committee with Vice President Fritz. Great work, hard work needed to be done. I understand all that, and I appreciate it. But in spite of all that, in spite of all the assurances, I am a little uneasy. I am uneasy because it's easy for us to...
I am uneasy because it's easy for us to prepare and adopt a policy such as the one presented and then forget about it. And I've seen that happen way too many times. So I think Regent Salzwedel is correct. I don't know if we need a resolution, but we certainly need to talk about this. Because based upon the emails, based upon the conversations face to face, based upon the resolutions that we all received from all of the campuses, faculty and students are not too happy with what's going on. Some of them may not understand and may not have had it explained as well as it has just been by Regent Adongo. But on the other hand, there's an element of distrust. And I feel uneasy about this because I want some accountability. And that's not because I don't trust somebody or I don't believe what they're saying. I just think it's easy for these things to fall through the cracks because of all the responsibilities and requirements that are placed upon all of the campuses and upon the system. I think that we should have a meeting and I think it should be on the agenda in December. No saying we're too busy to hear it because we're not. We can fit this really important in on the December agenda to talk about how we're going to ask the campuses to report to us. By way of have they set up a group? Will they set up a group of faculty? Because faculty, as Regent Nixon said, under the law, we have to do what we have to do. But faculty under the law has to do what it has to do. 3609 outlines the responsibilities of the regions, setting policy, the responsibility of chancellors and of faculty of being responsible for academic issues. And they should be by law involved in this. And we can harmonize all of our duties under the statute so that we make sure that this is done properly and with shared governance. We cannot be successful without shared governance. And I believe that just because we had to do this quickly, doesn't mean that we can not do it from here on in. And I think we should have a talk about setting forth times when we hear from the campuses about what's going on, about are they able to offer the the courses that each campus thinks is unique to its culture and necessary for them and their students to exist and to teach and properly prepare people for the future and their employment and that they're able to transfer. I think we have that responsibility. It doesn't have to be in the form of a resolution, but it has to be in the form of us asking for them to follow up with us and giving them the opportunity to have a voice. So I would ask Regent President Bogust that we put this on the agenda and it should be an open session so that everybody can hear what we're talking about and it be transparent. So please put that item on the agenda for the December meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Regent Manydeeds, and we will bring that up at the December meeting. It's so noted. Thank you for your comments. Regent Underlee.
Thank you very much, Regent President Bogust. I just also want to begin by acknowledging that I had significant concerns with the policy as it was being developed. I mean, my concerns were rooted in preserving the integrity of our liberal arts education, ensuring campus autonomy and protecting the quality of teaching and learning across our universities. These issues matter deeply to me. I know they matter deeply to all of us. And they mattered to the students, the faculty and the staff that we also serve. So but at the same time, I want to just concur with what I heard from Regent Adongo as well as Regent Salzwedel and Manydeeds that I also understand the transfer student experience. I mean, we are a system and we should behave like one when it comes to how credits transfer. Students deserve clarity, they deserve predictability and they deserve fairness when they move between our campuses. And that principle is what guided much of my thinking throughout this process. I also wanted to express my appreciation to everyone who took the time to reach out. Faculty governance leaders, academic staff, there were students and many others. And I just want to reaffirm that I read every message and I made numerous phone calls to fully understand the implications of this policy. And the insights from all of those who reached out shaped my approach. But they also helped ensure that what I was voting on today is something that I could stand behind. I want to also concur with what Regent Manydeeds just said that as we move forward, I agree that we have to hold UW system accountable. You know, for ensuring or the administration accountable for ensuring that the student experience remains central, that campus autonomy is respected. But that also faculty and academic staff voices continue to play a meaningful role in this work. Implementation going forward, we have to honor both the intent of the law and the expertise of the people who teach and support our students every day. So while I still have concerns, I'm confident that we'll be able to work through them and through the finer details as the policy is implemented. And I'm hopeful that it will continue to evolve in the ways that respect campus mission while improving student experience. Compromise, as was mentioned before, has been essential to getting us here. And I appreciate the thoughtful collaboration that made that possible. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Regent Underlee and Regent Prince.
I'll be very brief and try not to say everything my colleagues have said, except that I totally agree with them. We have to obey the law. However, what is helping me to vote for this in the affirmative, even with a taste in my mouth that I don't necessarily like, is the fact that it is our policy. And I totally agree with, and I'll just use first names, Regent Jack and Regent Ed around. We need the accountability. We need to know how this is going. And the only way that I will get through voting for this is knowing that it is our region policy, which means regions can change it if it's not working. So thank you.
Thank you, Regent Prince. Regent Nixon.
Yeah, I'll do what I do, which is stay kind of sort of useless comments at the end of something. It's been I, and again, I agree with everything that's been said by my fellow regions. And I know we have all worked hard. Talk about phone calls, talking to people. I met with leadership of two different campus faculties, the Senate. And I will tell you, as I read a lot of the resolutions, a lot of the points, I went, yep, too fast. Yep, we didn't use the normal process. Yep, went through all of that. But we weren't given a choice on this. This was passed in the summertime. Okay, when there were no faculty on campus, we had to raise tuition because of the amount of time we were given to deal with this. All right. But we will deal with it and it is law. And this is sort of a test for us. I almost had one legislator bet me that we would never, ever get this done by the deadline they set. So we're passing the first test that this university can in fact respond. And it is going to respond and this is going to be an ongoing process. Now let me make one comment that kind of follows up on Regent Adongo. This particular issue is near and dear to me. Forty years ago, yes, I was alive. And I went to transfer credits, couldn't transfer chemistry, even though it was the same book that was used. They didn't transfer that. Algebra and trigonometry, apparently the answers come out differently at different campuses. That one kind of fascinated me too. And meteorology, apparently the weather is different in different parts of the state of Wisconsin and the way it's taught. So I had to retake all these classes because the transfer was not accepted. And my favorite was in graduate school when I had a law school class that the graduate school didn't want to accept for a public policy kind of free card. All right. The argument that made nothing with me was only 2% of the students. And this Regent Adongo said, this is a big deal when you're trying to transfer. And I am shocked, shocked that 40 years after I went through that, we are still having these conversations about the ease of student transfer among our own campuses. And I'm happy to see that we're we're kind of resolving it. But you know, to people who say we kind of rushed this, here's my comment. The system, the campuses, the professors, the regions had 40 years to fix this in between when I went through it and now. So in according to the bill, it was a rush. But in my view, could have been done 40 years ago because it's not a new issue. I will vote for this with the same reservations that I have heard my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Nixon, Regent Ryan and then Regent Goedem.
You know, reiterate my thanks for everybody who worked on this and also spent so much time briefing us, you know, separating fact from fiction, you know, lots of emails trying to discern that. I really do appreciate Johannes, your your work and everybody else's work to help educate us along the way. One of my recommendations, you know, I understand the need for updates and I believe in the accountability comments that were made in the immediate future. But more from the long term, did this actually make a difference? You know, are we surveying students that have transferred? Was it easier? Are we actually looking at how many more students transfer within our system versus maybe saying transfer outside our system? I do believe that type of structured reporting is necessary, just like, you know, for those of you who serve on business and finance with me, structured reporting and really getting down to a good P and L. Education Committee, and I really do believe in our committee structure and that's where the sausage is made. That's where the reporting needs to happen. Education Committee needs some sort of structured reporting on transferring now to see if all of the work that we've been done, have done, has made the desired impact. Because if it hasn't, we probably should revise our policy. It's not working. More of more of that opportunity. So I really do believe the committee structure needs to be leveraged more in situations whenever we have a resolution where our intent is to make a positive difference, which I hope despite it being driven by the law, our intent is to make a positive difference here. And the only way to track it is through data and that's accountability. And I really do believe we should do that through our own committee structure. So my recommendation, not to give my fellow Regent Prince more work to do, but is to figure out from a committee perspective, just like I've been working with Julian, what our P and L should look like. Education Committee needs some sort of dashboard around transferring in general education that is born out of this. It obviously won't happen in the first year because the dust needs to settle, the campuses need to do their work. They've got to get their policies in place, but long term, I believe that's the way hopefully we can track this. And if we did make a positive difference, that we all have the commitment to pivot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Goedem.
Thank you. Hopefully you guys can hear me. I don't think I have the best connection unfortunately. But Regent Ryan did sort of take some of where I was going, which is how do we measure the success? And I don't want to gloss over how challenging this has been. So I'm not going to rehash all of my fellow regions' comments. But I agree that we've received a lot of feedback. We've heard the feedback. We know a very rigorous and time intensive process was undertaken to get to where we are. And so it is not without a lot of thoughtfulness and intentionality that we look through these materials and and, you know, I will be voting for this, but I do also have some reservations given the feedback we receive. But I, looking ahead, as I like to do, I'm thinking about 2026, which is the timeline by which this will be implemented. And really would like to have further understanding of the support that system will provide to the universities, how this, you know, lift is going to be undertaken because it is very significant. And we know the universities are contending with quite a bit. So I thank you all in the faculty, staff and administrative roles for taking all this on. But I do think that Regent Adongo's comments are spot on. And so when you when you minimize them by saying novice or or student perspective, I think this is the precise perspective that we need because this is why we do this work, to have a student centered and focused policies, which this, you know, is as imperfect as it may be. I think it gets us closer to something that supports students as they seek to transfer. But I'd like to understand the operationalization of this, the needs that the universities will have to be to be supported by system in that. And then subsequently, what are the success metrics that Regent Ryan has indicated that we will need to understand? Because it is, as Regent Manydeeds said, our policy. So it is subject to our discretion and change. And that will be done, you know, after investigation, research to the extent necessary and input and data. So those are my comments. I thank everyone for the hard work on this. I know it was a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Regent Goedem and Regent Nixon and then Regent Walsh.
Yeah, I just want to say I don't want to ever hear the word bucket again. And if we could somehow come to a resolution to eliminate the word bucket from the lexicon, I think that would go a long way with a lot of the campuses. That's all.
Thank you. Regent Walsh.
Thank you, Regent President. I I echo many things that were said here. I do want to say in addition to all the hard work that was done by people across the system, I'm so grateful that we have the two student regents on this board that we have. They are smart, they are dedicated and they were invaluable sources of advice as we listened to the discussion for this. I couldn't agree more with the fact that this should have been done a long time ago. Do we like as a board to be backed into a corner with money hanging over our heads to get it done? No, no one would have preferred to do it that way. But unfortunately, that's the position that we're in. And I do feel that once we get things ironed out, I have ultimate faith in Johannes and his group to help us through this. I've made it very clear that I want to make sure campuses get the resources they need to carry this out. This is additional stuff for these folks workload. And we already know that our staff that carry out these kind of evaluations of student records are are overworked, along with many of our staff on campus. So if if you're not getting the resources you need, that's one of the things that the board wants to hear about. Because that we will, we will do anything we can to fix that. And I will also be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Regent Walsh. Any further comments? I just also wanted ditto what Regent Walsh just said about our amazing student regents. We are very grateful and everyone was shaking their head when you were saying that. So I just wanted to point that out. I also want to just make it clear that I've heard and I know all of the regions have heard from students loud and clear that this makes them extremely anxious. And I think many of them maybe, you know, it's unknown and it's a big change and they're not sure what this is going to look like. But the fact that they took the time to email us is extremely impressive. I mean, they're busy, the busy students just trying to survive. And so not only shared governance reached out, but many students. And I'm very grateful to hear their voices and we are listening. So. All right, I think we are ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, okay, any opposed, say no. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you so much to everybody. Thank you, regions. Before we end open session, I just want to take a moment to address the passing of Regent, or sorry, Dean Emerit of Nursing, Linda Scott, who passed away a couple nights ago. And she was quite an amazing person. It was quite sort of unexpected, her illness. And she, Karen and I and Kyle all served on the University of Nashville boards with her. And she had just finished, I think she was appointed in 2022, chosen as the the president of the Academy of Nursing, which is such an honor. And she made such a significant impact to the School of Nursing and we're all going to miss her. It's it's a real loss, a real heavy loss. And I just wanted to to make that known that we're all very sad for for her passing. We'll miss her. So thank you for listening to that. And we are now going to move into closed session. And Kyle, if you could read in Spanish, move us into closed session since you're now, is it a resident of something? Oh, go for it.
Yes. As of this morning, I am officially a temporary resident of Mexico. But I I sure as hell can't read this in Spanish.
Would you say good luck?
See, I don't even know what that means. I moved with the Board of Regents, move into closed session to A, deliberate and negotiate contracts that require a closed session for competitive bargaining reasons as permitted by State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E. And B, confer with legal counsel regarding potential litigation as permitted by State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent G.
Okay. Megan, please call. Sorry.
Regent Bogust?
Yes.
Regent Weatherly?
Yes.
Regent Adams?
Yes.
Regent Adongo?
Yes.
Regent Fritz?
Yes.
Regent Goedem?
Yes.
Regent Cruiser?
Yes.
Regent Manydeeds?
Yes.
Regent Nixon?
Yes.
Regent Palzowitz?
Yes.
Regent Prince?
Yes.
Regent Ry?
Yes.
Regent Rogers?
Yes.
Regent Salzwedel?
Yes.
Regent Terwilliger? Regent Terwilliger? See, thank you. Regent Trainer, Regent Underlee?
Yes.
Regent Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Before we consider the items on, we need to pause. Oh, sorry, we're pausing to clear the line. Sorry about that. I rushed ahead.